While we're waiting, I just wanted to announce as I announced in the curriculum committee meeting that there is a massive outage of Zoom across that's affecting the entire east coast and also some other telecommunications. So if I need to turn off my camera, that's why. It didn't happen in the last meeting, but it's being widely reported.
The Ithaca College email that came out said it was degraded Zoom service. I thought that was an interesting choice of words to talk about it. But Rob, I do believe we have a quorum at this point in time, so handing it over to you.
Great, without further ado, we'll go ahead and call this a public voting meeting to order of the Board of Education of the Ithaca City School District. And I do believe we'll go right into exec session for the appropriate reasons, and we'll need a motion and a second to do that. And I believe the Board will meet for a bit, but then we'll invite Dr. Brown to come join us, I believe, and that was what I would like to happen. But go ahead and ready for a motion, and we can call a roll.
I move that we enter into exec session to discuss school district business, matters of employment, and ongoing litigation.
Second?
Saying my part, thank you, Chris. Tricia, please go ahead and call the roll.
Robin?
Yeah?
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole Lefay? Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wasn't?
Yes.
Very good, thanks, everyone. And we're going to jump out to breakout room, and we'll be back shortly and should be right around seven o'clock for public session. So thanks, everybody. We'll join our exec session breakout room. So we are, we are back, correct? And from an extended exec session, and I do believe we have a, we do have our quorum. So we're back and, and ready for a public portion of our meeting tonight. And I, unless I'm mistaken, I don't believe there's any modifications to the agenda as presented. I don't believe so, correct? Not hearing any? So, so let's go on to the public comment period. And Tricia, Emily, I believe there was one person signed up, and then anyone else who wishes to speak will, will entertain those folks as well.
Hi, Rob. Mr. Adam Jacobstein would like to speak.
Hi, thanks, thanks for listening. Thanks for serving on the board. I just wanted to offer my perspective. I'm a parent of DeWitt High student. And, you know, for both, both my children are learning in person. And from what I've been hearing from the elementary schools, the in-person thing is going really well with the teachers there. The past couple of months has been really frustrating for both of them and for a lot of their friends because they're going to school, and most of their teachers aren't actually here. Sure, you guys, you know all this, but I just wanted to offer my, my opinion and perspective that the ICSC should put forward a date and a goal eliminating hybrid learning going to person with teachers getting vaccinated and with all the science coming out about the lack of transmission in schools that, that needs to be a public goal and we need time to get on board. And then some teachers may never get on board, and that's going to have to be okay. Some, you know, the teachers' union may never, may never be on board with that. That's just, you know, whether that's in March or April or September, you know, that's going to have to be okay. And I hope that the school board will move like this. I think the kids are, a lot of kids are carrying a gun. They're dropping out of high school, going in person because they're just, they go there and there's a teacher on their computer screen. And that's frustrating. I also did want to comment that I really appreciated the ICSC athletics for doing the in-person training sessions. It was really like a pipeline for my elder son. And really happy to hear that they're going to be starting that up again February 1st. So that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else? Tricia, raise a hand at this time.
I'm checking in the chat right now, Rob, as well as, let's see if there's a raised hand. I don't see anyone else at this, at this moment.
Very good, Tricia. We're, we're always happy to hear from folks from the community. And please feel free to continue to tune in. And so let's move on right on to student reps, and that would be Ithaca High. We are a bit behind, so we'll just keep moving. And so Ithaca High and everyone that's done a great job all year.
Hi, I'm Adam, I'm one of the, to the board. So now, this morning, oh, many, many Ithaca High School juniors took the PSAT. It's, from what I understand, the first big time that students have come back to school for a test of sorts like this. So it's definitely nice that we are able to kind of return to a sense of familiarity. Recently, IHS competitive athletics have begun again. One team who had their first, both in-person and virtual meets in the past week. So that's definitely exciting to hear about. And we'll see where sports can go from here in the current COVID situation. This week, there will be a performance of student-directed one-act plays as well. So we are looking forward to seeing those. As many of you may know, February is Black History Month. So at Ithaca High School, the first week of February will be Black Lives Matter Week, where there will be many student and community presentations and a lot of discussions and activities surrounding the issues of social justice, racial justice, and many more.
Hi, I'm Grace, I'm another student rep. So I would like to say that we are still continuing our work with the IHS administration. Just yesterday, we had a meeting with them, and we're talking about creating another school-wide survey just for the beginning of the third quarter, discussing a range of topics from academics to classroom engagement to like COVID safety. So we are planning on working closely with the IHS administration to create the survey. There, there's also an increased student participation in these topics because we have, Ms. Arnold has made a new Wednesday morning meeting. So there's a more, a diverse background of students can participate in these conversations.
Hi, I'm Alex, I'm also a student rep. So we've continued to hear some discussions between like some students and teachers about their concerns, their continued concerns over technology. And I know we've like discussed this in the past. So we were just wondering if you guys had any updates on any programs that you guys were doing or any work that you're doing on that issue.
Hi, I'm Emma Zonin. So after the last board meeting, many students were surprised by Dr. Brown's sudden resignation. Following his announcement, many serious allegations were spread in the community, leaving quite a few students confused and upset as to the reason of his departure and what an, what an empty superintendent position will mean for the district and for the rest of the year. So we were wondering how will Dr. Brown's resignation impact the district and, you know, our lives as students? And also, the accusations mentioned in the circulating document were quite serious. And while there remain to be allegations, and many students wonder if the board is planning on addressing the allegations directly to the school to clear up any misunderstandings that may be had.
Thanks, everyone. Any board responses at this time?
This is Ann here, I just have a follow-up question. Again, thank you so much for all of what you've been doing. And I, my question has to do with the surveys, because I think this is really exciting that you're like surveying the student body in real time. So my question is, when you do the surveys and you're getting information, how is the loop in terms of the information you get and how we're able to absorb that information or work with the information? Like, you know, like where is the information from the survey going once you collect it?
So the last time we sent out a general survey, we gave all of the information to the Ithaca High School administration. And we routinely also do smaller-scale surveys with more quick turnarounds that are often very targeted using social media that we share with the Ithaca High School administration and with Ms. Arnold, the Student Activities Director, which they then use to, like, direct department meetings. There are also staff and students involved committees now on grading and attendance and engagement. And so a lot of that feedback goes there as well. But it's been, the last time we sent out a, a more like general survey was, if I remember correctly, back in November. And so we want to kind of collect more information and see how much we've progressed since then, what has changed, what hasn't, what needs to be improved on, and where to go from here. And in terms of topics, focusing on anything from technology to the in-person and online experience to COVID safety in school. So, yeah.
Great, thanks.
And so, anyone else at this time? Go ahead, Moira.
I have a question really for our leadership team regarding the starting of sports. So I've just been, you know, reading what's in the media that the decision was being left up to local health officials. So, you know, what I'm hearing tonight is apparently we are going ahead, but I'd really like to hear some more specifics about who's doing what.
Yes, ma'am. We had a gathering this afternoon with local health officials. We have the go-ahead to begin quote-unquote "high-risk" sports as of February 1st, and that is the plan. Now, there are many details to be worked out. Can we travel from Tompkins County to another county to compete? Items like that are still in negotiation, but as of right now, we are planning to begin sports on February 1st, working closely with the Health Department and folks in our section. And most importantly, with Miss Little, under Miss Little's leadership, with other A.D.s across our region.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. I'm glad the turf is basically done. That's a, that's a good thing. Anything else right now before we hop to the consent and then other things, other items? And we'll address, go ahead.
I would like to just address Mr. Jacobstein, who made a comment earlier about hybrid, the hybrid model and virtual learning. And one, thanking you for your comments. And two, empathize with you having a middle schooler who is struggling with the virtual learning, who is typically on the honor roll and having a hard time adjusting to the hybrid model and looking at our admin team or exec team to be able to speak more to how are we evaluating success and engagement? We've been, we've been living like this for 11 months, but we've, we're in January now and just wondering how then our evaluator and all of you are talking about success and engagement and where we are with grading. I know that we had a conversation a couple of months ago, but wondering where we are in terms of middle school and high school grade and looking at those topics.
Lily, you want to share a brief synopsis of where we are right now? And we can talk about this as another agenda item later.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Sue, thanks for the question and call. So in terms of evaluation in regard to where we are and the different modes, and we talked a little bit about this at our last curriculum committee, that, you know, some folks have asked us to really compare in-person versus hybrid versus distance as well, and that there are some, there are some challenges associated with doing that, just knowing that we can't control for a number of factors, like who selected it, right? And, and all of that. However, that being said, we're still, of course, monitoring the data. How are kiddos, how are kiddos doing? So we're able to go in and see if kids are engaging on Canvas or not, right? And so that provides one level of information to us in order to, for us, for our deans and for our associate principals and principals and counselors and social workers and others to reach out directly to kids and connect with them, see what they may need, and make physically distant home visits, right? Call them up, right? All sorts of things. So, so we're using, we're using data from Canvas to allow us to understand engagement, but then, of course, also grades. And, and you're right, grading is, grading is frankly quite messy right now, right? And there are a lot of approaches, a lot of approaches from a lot of different school districts across the country right now that, of course, we've, we've taken a look at. And I would say the, the folks at Ithaca High School, department leaders, departments themselves, and the, the folks at Boynton and DeWitt as well, they're really trying to find the best way forward to support kids, right? And to help ensure that they're, they're still learning, right? So the high school is working on essentially a safety net system. And so they're working to communicate that out with caregivers and others in the, you know, they've been doing some communication, are going to be communicating more. And I believe Mr. Mitchell was on briefly as well. And he's been doing great work around that, Jackie Richardson as well. And the, and the grading committee that's working with Jackie Richardson and Lynn Vanderwerth, they're starting back again. And frankly, they're trying to take a long-term approach, right? So there's essentially some emergency shifts that we know that we need to make right now, right? So in what ways can we leave the door open for kids who may not, who may be missing a great number of assignments right now, right? And we're starting second semester soon. So in what ways can we leave the door open for those students and find ways to still allow them to get credit and to pass a class, right? So that's where we are. Dr. Brown, I don't know if you had anything else that you wanted to add or anything else?
Looking now, and maybe bring this up as a topic. We'll, we'll work with the board officers, maybe bring this up again at our next meeting and go a little bit deeper.
Absolutely, Dr. Brown. It's a, it's a topic front of mind, and we'd like to dig into it a bit. Anything else right now before we move on with the rest of the agenda? Not hearing anything? If we could, let's go to the consent. Thanks, everyone, for your comments. And just need a, a motion and a second, and then we can address any questions regarding the consent agenda.
Before, I'm sorry to interject. Before we move on, Emma raised some points that are very widespread throughout the student body right now. And we would really appreciate it if you, as the board, would address the current situation just to give us your position or where the board is at right now in terms of the current situation.
Adam, I'll, I'll address that if we could, after the consent agenda is dealt with, and we can get into the, the bulk of the business before the board. And so we'll do that in a few minutes.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Saying my Chris, move by Moira. Chris, just a few items if you wanted.
Sure, there's quite a bit. I'd love to shout out the 6.5 appropriation of funds for the Park Foundation, culturally historically responsive literature project. A special thank you to Mary Grover for the heavy lifting and the work with that $40,000. There's a lot in this consent agenda that we went over in finance. Also, resolution to approve the agreement with Tetra Tech for DeWitt Middle Schools Capital Project, the appointment of a claims auditor. What else? Yeah, we've got a lot in there. And then there's some Title I, so money being moved around, or accepted, rather. So please, folks, dig in there. We cover a lot of this in finance and go into great detail. But there's a lot. But special shout-out to Mary Grover with the work she did with the Park Foundation Cultural Historic Responsive Literature Project.
And Chris, I would give a shout-out to Rob Swartout, who is, Swartout, who has consistently donated to the athletic programs over many, many years and, and doing another gift to the athletics program. Just to point out, community members can make gifts to the school district and designate where they want them to go. And it is, you can certainly direct your support. Any other questions regarding the consent?
Chris, would you like to speak to the farm-to-table, which is on the consent agenda?
Amanda, could you help me out with that? We did cover it, I brought a blank.
That's another shout-out to Mary, right, for farm-to-table. And so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to find the language on the consent agenda right now.
State of New York, 21st Century Community Learning Centers?
Yeah, but.
Right, so this is just, this is, thank you, Moira. I've got to find part of that language, I was looking through the list. So essentially, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong. I just want to make sure, this is really just receipt, we've, we've applied for this grant, this funding comes in, and then this is just accepting purposes that were written in the grant? There's really nothing new to this? This is just sort of the way that it rolls in via payments. Mary, how'd I do? Excellent.
You got a new call? Anything else from anyone? If not, Tricia, if you could call the roll.
For Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell? Eldred Harris?
Have to finish chewing, yes.
Nicole Lefay?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wasn't?
Yes.
Very good, thanks, everyone. On to Dr. Brown and superintendent's reports and announcements.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Anjly. It's good to see you all. And we have much to get to this evening, particularly around budget and where our financial forecasts, what our financial forecast is saying. But yes, I heard Emma and I heard Adam, and I've heard from a lot of students, quite frankly, over the last couple of weeks, and a lot of community members. And I just wish to clarify some things and share some new thinking. At our last meeting, yes, I did speak to my wishes to transition to a new role in February. That's not going to happen. I'm, after many conversations and reflections, I'm wishing to be here and serving as a superintendent and this community going forward. And indefinitely, we have much work to do. And I, you'll be hearing about that work tonight and in every meeting about the work we need to do in our community. But yes, I recognize the stirred that I caused by talking about a transition. But Emma, I look forward to seeing you at the next superintendent advisory council, Adam, and other places, and all of the young people and community members who've reached out wishing for us to continue the work. So thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Anjly, and I look forward to the conversations we have tonight and going forward.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Brown. And Adam, I didn't want to step on Dr. Brown being able to speak to the subject, so that's why I did not speak to the subject earlier. So just to clarify, for the superintendent to actually resign from the district, it is necessary via his contract that he sends a letter to the board president, which happens to be me. That never happened. We were in the talking stage, basically, obviously supportive of Dr. Brown's work here statewide and nationally. But we, a series of talks with the board. And, you know, I think the, the main point is the board gave Dr. Brown the opportunity to change his mind. And indeed, he did so. And Dr. Brown, your heart and soul is with the Ithaca City School, just public education, being in a public role. And, you know, we are more than happy to have you lead this district and continue the work that we started 10 years ago. And, but there's a lot more work to do, Dr. Brown. And you have a contract, and we're going to hold you to it. So there's, so it's an opportunity to move forward. We're glad to answer any and all questions. But indeed, and in fact, Dr. Brown never formally resigned from the district. He has a contract, he is the superintendent, he will continue to be the superintendent. It's all hands on deck as we continue to put this district back together through this COVID crisis. And it's, we're, we look forward to having our full exec team throughout the rest of the year and into the summer and into next year as we go into fully hoping that next fall, we are fully in-person instruction. And, and we certainly migrate out of a hybrid learning environment that we are in right now in this spring semester of 2021. And, but very happy that I did see, driving by the high school, that school, school sports registrations for fall sports, it said, I believe, was February 1st. But, you know, we'll see. But there will be some sort of fall athletic schedule and hopefully a full curricular schedule by the time we're done in June. But Dr. Brown, we are. and hopefully a full curricular schedule by the time we are done in June. But Dr. Brown, we are, we're, we're open. We are open to discussions about any topic that anyone wants to talk about and as long as it's about the school district and, and what we do and how we move forward with this district. So without further ado, Dr. Brown, if you're good, we'll, we'll go on to the budget and the revenue projections and as we put a budget together for this next school year.
Yeah, Amanda, I unmute and share some of your updates and thinking about what we're going to be doing with this budget process this year.
Great, and I think Tricia will be presenting for us the few slides that we pulled together for you so that folks can see this, you know, at any time that they want to look in on, on what the state is saying about the state revenue at this moment in time. So I want to be, I want to be really forthcoming that this overview that we're going to do is really about how to understand the state aid runs that just were released at the end of last week. There was a lot of confusion about them. It's a little bit premature to convert those state aid runs to actual what the budget would look like. So Tricia, if you don't mind going to the second slide, I wanted to just start to build a shared understanding of sort of not only the process, but some of the new factors and ways that we should be looking at the information that the governor shared. So many of you that have been through the budget processes before, or even if you're new to it, there's typically times in this cycle, right, starting in January that are predictable. So in January, we know that the governor releases essentially two school districts, a series, it's, you know, hundreds of pages of documents in terms of what did you receive last year and how it was allocated in different line items like reimbursement aids to school districts and then what you will be receiving in your budget planning moving forward. And this is preliminary numbers, right? So these are not final. These are sort of his best guess in terms of what he believes he would like to take forward as the state budget. And there are also budget bills that are part of his budget overview for the state. Those get sort of debated and there's lots of folks that give input and those go back and forth within the legislature and then he comes with a final state budget in April and that's what we use to drive our revenue. So there were a couple of things that made this year quite unique, obviously. We know that from last year to this year, there were a number of adjustments that the governor used to actually decrease our state aid. They were called pandemic adjustments and then there was federal aid monies that backfilled that adjustment. You're going to see that same type of language again this year, although the, the words themselves had changed, right? So you're going to see an adjustment or a reduction to our state aid numbers and then there's going to be federal monies, just like last year, that will fill the gap. And so there was, you'll see those in the next slide soon when we, when we transition, I'll point that out. There was also a lot of discussion from the governor regarding the potential for federal aid. So if you remember correctly, we received federal aid last fiscal year. Then again, there was more federal stimulus aid that came that was for COVID in December that was released to school districts. And now again, there's talk about more federal aid coming specifically to states that we hope would trickle down to school districts. And the governor's been talking about two key amounts, either $6 billion of federal aid coming to school to New York State or $15 billion of aid coming to New York State, depending on what's going to be happening federally. The budget that he released at this moment in time and the numbers that you'll see on the state aid runs are based on the assumption that the $6 billion will come into effect, okay? And so if that doesn't happen, the governor has already warned that the numbers that we see in the state aid could be reduced. So that's why if you're looking at this slide and you're sort of reading kind of a few of the key pieces, number one, a lot of these federal aid packages, right, and stimulus monies are one-year only. We, right now, there's an assumption that it's based on $6 million in addition to what is coming to us in December. These are not final numbers. And also, one of the surprises that, one not so surprising and one surprising, one of the not so surprising moments was that, again, the governor compressed a whole bunch of aids, right? And you'll see those actually in the top right corner of this slide and put them in the one line. That makes just our lives as school districts a lot more difficult because we have to actually take that one line item and break it down and figure out, are the monies that actually are allocated in each one of the components of the larger services aid line, are those accurate? So we'll be doing that work as well. And then finally, the, the governor's runs this year, and this was shocking to a lot of people, included the school districts' star amounts. And so what essentially that was sort of, I want to avoid any loaded language here. It was a way to show school districts and communities another area of state support and that goes directly to taxpayers. And so it was listed as sort of an aid, an assistance to schools, right? And so, you know, there was a lot of talk about, are they going to try to eliminate it? What's happening? What you'll notice for our district and many others, for me, the significance was they put the star amount there, which yes, in fact, goes to our taxpayers to support their payment of tax bills. It's either a refund or a rebate that they get on, on the amount of money that they pay in taxes. But if you notice on our state aid runs, the amount of the withholding or decrease of aid is equal to the amount of the star payment. So Tricia, if you can go to the next slide, I'll try to show this in numbers. So for folks that like narrative, that slide probably appeals to you. This is more for folks that like the numbers, right? And so what, I just want to give you just a brief overview before we dive into this. So I tried to clean up the state aid runs in terms of what really was relevant for us to look at. So you'll notice here the star amount is off. It is not a state aid amount that we receive. Districts do not get that money, but that is given directly to taxpayers to support taxpayers. And so I did not include that because it is not part of the picture of state aid, okay? I also included the, the rows that were relevant to state aid in terms of what matters to us as school districts. And then the columns are the year that we're living in and then if you move over to the right, futuring for next year or budget planning for next year. And again, these, this is not reflective of what will be in the budget. This is reflective of what the governor told us, the information at this moment in time that is the precursor to the final information that we will receive in April. But it's really important to track this. So a key, some of the key pieces of this, if you go along the very first row for foundation aid, which many board members have tracked for years on end, right? We, we, it was going up and then in 2009, 2010, it plummeted and it was called the GEA or the Gap Elimination Adjustment. And they removed state aid in terms of foundation aid and recalculated the formula and withheld aid to school districts. This aid amount that you see here, not only is it equal to last year, but it's equal to the year prior to last year, so 1920. Because if you remember last year, when I did this presentation, we actually had a much higher number in that foundation aid row and due to the pandemic adjustment, it was decreased. And now we're at that decreased amount as our starting point. So that's very concerning. And if you look forward, right? My worries are, we need to make sure that we're not doing the budget in a one-year-only lens. That we're going to really have to come to an agreement around our assumptions of what we might expect in 2023 and 2024. So right now, that's locked in and it might, might continue to be or maybe even be decreased. And I'll give you my sort of reasoning for that in a moment. The services aid, as you can see there, again, if you, if you saw the prior slide, it includes things like Bosie's aid, transportation aid, hardware technology, textbook aid. So that, we're going to have to be piecing that out and pulling, pulling those pieces out to ensure we know what we want to budget. The high cost excess and the private excess cost are really about students who, their education demands a higher cost per student because they need more services. So often that is our students who are receiving special education services either locally or actually placed privately. And so that aid is a reimbursement aid based on what we spend. And then the building aid, we talked about this a lot at both facilities and finance committee and that is the aid that we receive on projects that have already occurred and that over the course of 15 years, we receive aid back when we secure debt and pay principal and interest on that. So that's also a number that's rather predictable and we can, we can look at that. So you'll see a subtotal after all of those and there's really not that significant of a difference of those. I just wanted to make sure, there we go. Okay, so then if you look just underneath the subtotal, okay? You're going to see from last year, the language used was pandemic adjustment. That was the decrease to the aid amount. This year, they're calling it a local adjustment and it happens to be, again, that same amount that I said we receive in star. So that amount of money is backed out of our aid runs and then we receive the reimbursement, or I'm sorry, the, the December stimulus money that was related to COVID, released from the federal government to essentially backfill that decrease to get us to a place that's just above what the state aid run on that top would be. So that, those are the numbers. So for folks that like that, and again, we'll be doing more and more about this, especially at finance committee and we'll be breaking these lines down. We're also, Tricia, if you can go to the next slide. You know, these are sort of the next steps. We'll be doing this with the board, we'll be doing this together as an executive team and then really working our way toward those final numbers in April, right? So we have to analyze things. We have to look at these numbers and make sure that they're accurate, they matter. And to that next piece to complete the tax cap calculation, specifically the building aid, we want to make sure that that is accurate and not accounting for projects that we didn't complete yet or that we didn't file completion for. And then finally, we have to determine really what it is that we want to budget, right? So do we want to budget assuming that all of that federal COVID stimulus money is going to come our way? Or do we want to actually look at that and say, well, what's the reality of that? Because most likely, we're going to have to apply for it and we're going then to get reimbursed for things that we spent and so we're going to have to spend some time on the discussion. So again, this is not a budget. This is just an overview of this moment in time based on what the governor released with lots of new factors and lots of familiar factors. And we just wanted to take an opportunity to be able to educate folks and share that information and then also let folks know what we will be doing with that in the future.
This is, and I actually have a question. First of all, thank you for putting this together because I did find those runs exceedingly confusing this year. But what I'm still trying to figure out is the, it looks like by the time you all calculate it out, maybe we've kind of broken even. But is that only if federal, additional federal funds come to the state? So that if there are no additional federal funds in a COVID relief, that if that doesn't pass Congress, does that mean we're out $4 billion?
Tricia, can you just go back two slides, please, if you don't mind? So Anne, the assumption, right, of this budget is that this is based on additional $6 billion coming to New York State. However, it also includes the COVID relief funding that we got or received as of the December federal law that came into effect that, that essentially said that these monies would be trickling down to the state. So Tricia, can you go one more slide to the numbers? So Anne, to your point, the, the very, the second to last row across the bottom there, that states CARES slash COVID-19 supplemental stimulus, right? The, the first column was last fiscal year's monies that was, that were allocated by the state to the school district in the amount of just over a million dollars. That was called the CARES Act. We're in the process right now of applying to receive that and proving that we spent money to address COVID needs in our schools, okay? The second column, that $4.9 million, that is money that is already part of the COVID-19 supplemental stimulus monies that was enacted in December, right? All of the other numbers, specifically foundation aid, if the $6 billion is not given to schools, that's what the governor is saying, those are the things that will be in question. And perhaps there may be, this, this may be a rosy glow to state aid runs if that $6 billion does not come in. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's what I was worried about. And the other question I have is with the COVID supplemental aid that was supposed to be dedicated COVID aid, but when the governors, when the budget passed last year, we lost a certain amount of money and it was replenished with this COVID aid. But it seems like the COVID aid is tied to specific purposes. So how is that impacting core needs that we have if we can only use, say, that COVID aid for ventilation or whatever our needs might be?
Yeah, and I want to be really clear, it's not aid, it's a replacement of money that was aid. So I want to be very, very clear about that, right? So this is, this is essentially, it's a different funding stream to give us the money, to give school districts the money that they were owed. And you are absolutely correct. Angela Jordan, myself, Emily Shipe, we have been working with all of our directors to document all of the costs that we had that were related to COVID. And essentially what you're doing is you are applying almost in the manner of reimbursement, right? So you're showing them all of the things that you spent, spent the money on and then they're reimbursing you. And things do get kicked back. They do say, oh, no, we can't spend it on that. I'm so sorry. Oh, no, that doesn't qualify. And so we're actually working right now with them and also with FEMA to try to get additional federal money our way. And so it's a lot of work to, to get money that replaced our aid that could be used for general purposes, right? And general, I mean, important, the imperatives, the things that make us Ithaca, right? So we're, you're right, I, there are, the, the guidance on the strings attached to the COVID-19 supplemental stimulus money is, is yet to be given to us. And so as soon as we know what those are, we'll be working to ensure that every dollar comes our way.
Hey there, Amanda. Just wanted to, I don't think I've shared this with Anne yet, but we're both on Legislative Action Committee. I heard the chair of this New York State Senate Committee on Education, Shelley B. Meyer. She worked pretty hard at Cuomo for this, almost this exact one-to-one-dollar swap that we're discussing. And, and really talked up the need for New York State to step up its commitment to public education and give it more aid irrespective of what federal government does. Now they give us an opportunity to partner with her and find out more about the levers that she has to maybe enact something different. It's a little ridiculous that a state as large as New York is counting every chicken based on what the federal government does, just because the assumption is we have a president now who's more favorable to making states whole. So we should pursue that. It's not in my instinct to ever concede that what New York State does for kids is enough because we know how far behind they are. That's all I wanted to add. If I can find that link to her conversation, I'll make sure I send it to the board. She was pretty direct and pretty powerful.
Other questions for Amanda? What are your thinking, Amanda? Just again, looking at the, at the hard, raw numbers. Foundation aid being frozen for a third year in a row. When you're speaking to that number, that number is the number indicated here. If we get, if there is $6 billion, if there's not, then that number could be anything or whatever. Is that what you're adjusting, basically?
That is, that is my understanding that this is based on the assumption that $6 billion additional dollars would be rolling into the state.
All right, keep us flat. Obviously, if it's a $15 billion number that is floating around, then, then that changes. then that changes the math. Uh, but still, um, when, just caution folks, when, um, you know, when money comes into the state, uh, it doesn't flow to us all the time because we are not considered one of the higher needs districts. And we support much from our local taxpayers. And so, um, you know, it's really hard to determine the impact of a cut or frankly, uh, a, a bonus. If you, if you, speaking of, of more, more aid than we expected, um, certainly their other districts will probably get, uh, a higher percentage than we would get typically. Is that correct, Amanda?
Right. It depends on their wealth ratio. So we're right smack dab in the middle, right? We're, uh, we're like the, the one, which is, which is net, like sort of neutral. Um, but there, there are wealthier districts don't fare well typically, um, mainly for our wealth ratio, but also our location in New York State. Right? So, um, as Anne has shared the formula many times, along with many others, right? It goes to the big five. It goes downstate. It goes to Long Island, Westchester, you know, that area. And then the rest is the Hudson River West. And so it's, uh, we, we get a very small piece of the pie, um, when, you know, the entire, uh, western area, given the Hudson River West receives sort of, um, only about, it's like just shy of 50% of the dollars that would roll into school districts at any time.
And Amanda, that's why we thank, uh, our local taxpayers every year for their support. Uh, without whom we, you know, we could not do what we do here. Um, but that's, well, we do what we do here because our, our community, uh, has expected that and frankly demands it. So again, trying to balance that, but, um, you know, we are fortunate once again to be in a community that, that, uh, is growing economically even within, um, this era of this year. But, um, you know, look around, there's, there's a lot happening. Um, students are coming back, meaning Cornell and Atty. College, uh, construction projects are continuing. Um, you know, in the private sector, not, not just us, other people are building as well. So, um, it's, uh, it all goes to, uh, building a, a very strong tax base. And we certainly look forward to, uh, assistance from the state and to some extent the feds. But, uh, you know, it is the local taxpayers that support our mission and the vision and the work that we do. And, uh, it'll all work out, Amanda, right?
Robbie, you know, we'll, we will do the best we can. I, I have, I am so fortunate to have a team here in the business office that are, uh, you know, if you drive by, they're here on Sundays, they're working Saturdays, they're during budget season, there's such dedication. And we have an amazing team, um, right, of, of principals and directors and colleagues that just, and teachers that give input. And there's just, um, I really feel, I, I agree with you 100%. I, I, I think a lot of talk at Finance Committee has been about really trying to continue to build on communication, both to and from, um, the community for inputs so that people really have confidence in what we're putting out. And, um, and, and we try to be as transparent as we can. And you're right, it is, the, the taxpayers are so key in all of this. Um, they show up, they, they really, um, ask amazing questions. And we want to make sure that we, um, have an education system that really represents, uh, what they're asking for and what they're paying for, right? So we're very proud of that and I want to continue that.
I just wanted to piggyback on two things Amanda shared. Um, we really want to reach out to the public as far as, as we go down this path of budget development. Um, so if there are any questions regarding the budget, how it's created, um, line items, please reach out to Amanda or myself. Um, and we'll make sure we have them available. We'll share them during finance and also at upcoming budget. I mean, sorry, upcoming voting meetings, so we can share them forward. Uh, we want to really create that communication and that dialogue to kind of demystify our budget process and what goes into making a budget, especially this year where there's a lot of uncertainty. So please, if you have questions, um, email myself or Amanda, or you know, anyone else on the Finance Committee and we'll get those answered to you as quickly as we can.
Thanks, Chris. And, uh, the budget basically is going to have a, uh, line item in the agenda for the rest of the year. I think Amanda, correct? There's not going to be too many meetings that we're not talking about one part of the budget or the other. And so expect that must see TV on two, on, uh, those odd Tuesday nights, uh, when there's lots of, uh, lots of other things to do. Uh, but those work sessions are, uh, available to be viewed, correct? And, uh, it's a great way to, uh, see the conversation and take part in it. Anything else, Amanda, that, uh, anyone else regarding budget and the revenue side right now? If not, uh, let's just move on. There's the, um, Anne, uh, you know, I'm going to hand it off legislative advocacy. I always have trouble with that word, as you know, Anne, uh, but, uh, you have, uh, an important, uh, initiative that you wanted to speak to.
Yeah. So let me just speak to that. And I'm hoping that Dr. Brown or Lily can also help me out or other members of our committee. So, um, as you know, one of the things that Legislative Advocacy Committee does is look at the intersection between what we do on the local level and then how, what the state does and what the federal government does, and how does that affect us? So, uh, we are working, some of the things that we work on, one of them, of course, is asking for, you know, as you saw, the, the, what Amanda just presented to us and making sure that the district has enough resources. And for that, we've already, um, brought that to the board. We like to make sure that other things that we're advocating for are things that the full board is in favor of. So, uh, we're currently, I've also already brought before the board, the issue of the, uh, uh, immunization registry as a way to improve the way that vaccinations are recorded, the student vaccinations. It's a state mandate and we're trying to improve that. So one of the other issues, and we're, we're, reason it comes up now is we're going to be meeting, um, with our legislators in the near future. And we want to bring to them sort of some more other things that we're interested in advocating for. And we want to make sure that, uh, the board knows what that is and agrees with it before we go out and say, you know, uh, you know, we are, we're going to advocate on that. Um, so one of the things we've been thinking a lot about is there's been a tremendous amount of, um, disruption, as you all know, as a result of COVID and the way education is done. A lot of things have been turned upside down. Things that have been done over and over again for years and years and years were all of a sudden questioned and rethought. So as horrible as this time is, there's also certain opportunities to rethink um, education. And for part of doing that, um, requires perhaps rethinking some of what those rules and regulations are. So, um, I'm wondering, Dr. Brown, if you want to just say a little bit about assessments and seat time? And as one of the things we are, um, thinking about.
Yes, uh, and, and both things. Uh, we were hearing the last couple of days that our state is now behind us and asking for those things to be waived. Um, the assessment we, I wish for us to reimagine how we assess this notion of a standardized, quote unquote standardized assessment is something I wish for us to rethink. Um, and, and we look for alternative approaches to assessment and giving us an indication of where our young people are. Um, seat time is another. I mean, I think we're, we're living it right now. Um, the requirements have been relaxed. Um, what does it mean to develop competency or achieve competency in a particular subject area? All things, I mean, and Lily, you know, the specific numbers, 100 and there's a, a certain number of hours that young people are required to be in a quote unquote seat. Um, that's something that we need to rethink, obviously, because of what we're dealing with right now in this pandemic. So all things that I'm hoping we do, we have a thoughtful, comprehensive conversation about using an anti-racist lens. Um, how do we build these structures and these new policies in a way that we're promoting equity versus, uh, contributing to the systems of oppression that these previous, uh, policies were intended to put in place? Lily, would you add anything to that?
What, what I would just like to add to that, one of the purposes of this is when we're dealing with what we've been dealing with, with COVID, some of these changes have happened by necessity. So you just can't do them, right? So then they say, well, I guess you don't have to do those certain number of hours. But going forward, if one is to actually innovate and use this experience as an opportunity for innovation, then I guess it might be useful to see how things like seat time interferes with innovation. So I don't know if either Doc Brown or Lily, if you wanted to say how that specific issue would allow you to be more innovative in terms of how we educate in a non-COVID shutdown pandemic world.
And one of the things we've been discussing is how flexibility can allow us to adapt to what kids need more readily. So, uh, not all kids may need to sit and be, you know, it's so interesting too. They call it seat time, right? Like you've got to be sitting in order to, to be learning, right? We can't be moving while we're, while we're learning. Um, you know, some, some students actually may know some of the curriculum or the content or may already be familiar with some of the learning forehands. Some students may need more time. They may need more flexible options, right? Um, and so you were thinking about knowing that the, the system has been disrupted. These requirements have been lifted now. And certainly this is not a perfect situation. We can't wait until COVID-19 is over. In fact, um, that there are some, some things that we're taking away, we understand are, are valuable, right? So students who may struggle coming into the school building, who may suffer from significant anxiety, right? They may, they may continue to need some level of virtual learning and that might not look like them sitting for the same number of hours for a particular course, right? So we're trying to figure out how to um, center the students that our system has traditionally marginalized and take a more flexible approach in the future beyond COVID.
So I guess what our committee is kind of asking the board is, do we have kind of your blessing to advocate for these types of changes that, um, would allow the district to be more intentional with the kinds of requirements? You know, the kinds of things that are required, um, and, uh, so that we could be a kind of more intentional, that the state could be more selective, I guess, with the requirements so that districts in turn could, um, be more, um, in, you know, experimental going, or more successful and more constructive going forward. I don't know. Eldred or Erin, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I mean, Anne, as we talked, uh, in our meeting last week, it's, um, sorry, my daughter was distracting me quite a bit, but, uh, you know, the testing is antiquated, you know, seating is different. Um, I, I, it's something I think that is, uh, we really need to explore. Uh, um, God, I'm not making sense at all, but no, I guess, I think we nailed it.
I'll only add, this is a continuation of the conversation. We know the state is having um, about, um, rethinking many things that are old and tired, like Regents exams, right? And that whole structure, we were all invited to both seats to have that conversation. Maybe this time last year, maybe it was before all the COVID thing exploded, but, um, yeah, the, 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 the economy is shifting. The state needs to keep up or we'll just continue to, um, uh, be in a position where we're now serving our kids in the best way possible. So we're all for it. But Dr. Brown almost came here, he almost came here to talk about this, this, um, consarnet, uh, seat time. I won't use the words he used, but consarnet is good enough. And here we are 10 years later, finally taking some steps to, um, to shift it. So yeah, I'm all for it. Both hands raised, three pointer, woo, woo.
I, I think just one of the funny things, not funny, one of the things about, um, last year when everything's first shut down. I think if there were like all these, uh, specific rules that were always there and always on the book. And then all of a sudden they were waived. You know, it's like, oh, well, you know, it's like, oh, you can do that? So I think that's one of the shifts, the, uh, kind of, uh, that, that has taken place over the, the last year. It's like, well, just because you've been doing it for the last 50 years in a certain way, doesn't necessarily mean that's the best, uh, the best thing there. So anyway.
So Anne, you're, uh, you know, this is not an item that we need to vote on, but certainly it is bringing forward. And certainly, um, from what I'm hearing, um, we certainly support, uh, your, your working group to advocate for some flexibility. Um, and in the private sector, that's what everyone has to do. Um, there is, well, and, um, I'm at work and there's no way that, uh, in a hundred years, that support staff would not have to be in, in this, in this office and have certain hours here. And if they were somewhere else, that, that was basically against the law. You couldn't do that. Um, and that changed, you know, in a week. And, um, and Flex, we had to come up with a new way to do the, do the same work and, or do it better. And frankly, they're finding ways to do it better. Working remotely or being flexible in, uh, in hours and, you know, just it's, uh, but it's, it's forcing innovation and it's forcing folks to take a look at their operations and how, how you, how do you develop and complete your work product every day? And same goes for public education. How do we do what we do, uh, but with flexibility and, and better? Um, you know, I think that's, it always has to, it can't be, you know, what we're advocating for can't, can't diminish the educational experience in these, uh, augmented, enhance it, right? Anne, right? Well, in my, in my opinion.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that's really vital. Yeah, it's not about diminishing it. It's, it's about, uh, you know, um, as I say, it's about innovation. So it would have to be for a constructive purpose. And it's not like we have a specific thing at this time, um, in terms of a specific, uh, innovation. But I, I think that it would be advocating for, um, making the process for, for getting those waivers perhaps easier if we had a specific proposal in mind. Um, that we knew we could, uh, you know, maybe it's an evening, I'm just going to throw a few things out, you know? You know, like we've talked, you know, in earlier board meetings, uh, about that, um, you know, an asynchronous Wednesday. I mean, I don't know, you know, I, I kind of fixed on that idea, you know, maybe asynchronous Wednesdays are actually really great. I don't know. One would have to assess it. But, um, if it was right now under the current system on an ordinary school year, I don't think you could do that. So it would be nice to be able to say, well, we thought that was really, uh, works for kids to have a day where we can do projects all day on Wednesdays and catch up on homework and have one-on-one time. It would be nice to be able to do that. So that, that, um, would be in my mind. That's what, one of the things that I, I think of.
Anyone else, uh, on the subject, uh, before we wrap up? Anne, uh, you know, there you go, Nicole, go ahead.
Um, I want to thank Anne, Erin and Eldred for working on this. And I also just find it very fascinating that we can get a place to be advocating to New York State education about making these shifts. But as a district, we can agree on pass fail for our middle school students and high school students or eliminating late fees. So I think if this committee can get to a place where we're advocating New York State makes some huge shifts that as a district, we can make some quick, short-term wins for our students that we actually have the purview and privileged to do.
Thank you, Nicole. Well said. And you know, anything else, uh, before we wrap up? There's, um,
Rob, I have something. Uh, are we, are we moved on to other discussion items? Is that, okay, um, the, listen, I know this is uncomfortable, but we had two students who asked a really difficult, really brave question. Um, Emma asked that question and, uh, Adam followed up. And I, I feel like we should at least take a moment to address them somehow. And I, if Emma wants to speak again, or I can paraphrase what she said, but I, I think that we need to acknowledge how brave they were to ask that earlier.
I can restate the question if that works for everybody.
Emma, I don't think you have to restate the question. I would, I'm looking at Rob, if Rob as our board president can just briefly speak to what he stated in the, the Ethica Voice, I think that, that would be great.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, see, not all students read the Ethica Voice. And I feel very strongly that allegations, they, they impact students a lot and students care about, you know, what's going to happen to them. And I think as much as it's good news for the district and our schools to have Dr. Brown continuing his role as superintendent, it doesn't take away from like unanswered questions and these really serious circulating allegations. And more importantly, how, how do we move on from that? And how do we address them so we can do so?
All right, Emma, we, what's, what I'm not going to do is get into, you know, a personnel matter in public. I spoke to a reporter for the Ethica Voice and certainly we've been very open in our dealings with allegations, allegations are allegations, that's what they are. So I will just do a quick, you know, we, I'll go through it. I met with a, a community member back in September and she brought some issues to my attention. I wasn't quite sure what she was talking about, but eventually I said, well, then it became clear. And I said, well, well, we do not deal with private, personal items of employees of this district. It's not our place. But then eventually, a packet of information, 200 pages long, was delivered to the district, delivered to me the Thanksgiving week and the day before Thanksgiving, basically. And on Monday, I called our district attorney, not the district attorney, the district's attorney that works for the district. And I said, go through it, because we have an obligation to look into any and all subjects, issues, good or bad, that comes before the district because we are the Board of Education. That's our, that is our obligation, that is our role and that is what we do. And, and we have to know whether there's anything, any area that, that allegations of any kind put the district at risk. So investigation was done, completed. And I got the results, we got the, the board received results Christmas week. And so after Christmas week, I sent a response to those who were, wrote the letter. And our investigator found that there was no justification for those allegations. There is nothing that the district did or had any, you know, there was nothing there that was going to impact the district. There is, you know, I don't know how many different ways I can say it, but there, you know, it was investigated. The board did due diligence regarding all allegations and found there was, they were unwarranted. So social media can do whatever they do, does not mean whatever is on social media is in fact reality. So we, we investigated it. We are very aware of what is being said, but that does not mean that, you know, we're, have tried to sidestep an issue that in fact that is not what we did. We went right at it and, and a very, very in-depth investigation of, of the 200 pages of information. And there's, there are things, Emma, that should be private within a family. And that is not our, that's not where we wish to go and we have no role there. And that is what we said, we have no role in those issues or allegations. Is that at all helpful?
Yeah, I guess, thank you. Unless anybody, anybody else has anything to say.
I was interviewed by the Ethica Voice several weeks ago and that article was printed today. That, you know, so I put that out there weeks ago. It's up to the press to decide what they wish to print, when they want to print it. But I can tell you that Dr. Brown is, I have the utmost respect for him, his work. He is a, is a person. And, you know, we are, we are very pleased that Dr. Brown is going to be able to continue, continue on as superintendent of the Ethica City School District. I am more than happy to have the best superintendent, one in New York State and one of the best in the country, continue to lead this district. And, and I'm not sure how much clearer I can make that. So we're, you know, it's, it's been a few weeks of discussions back and forth and soul searching on all parts. And Dr. Brown, I will not speak for you, but I will speak for me because that's all I can do. But we are, we are pleased that we have our exact team in place, ready to take on the challenges as they come before us. And we've talked about several of them already tonight. But our mission is to get this district back to where we can have the students in the classroom, students, wherever they can learn most efficiently and best and have the greatest experience that they can. That is, that is what we do and that's what our mission is. And, and that's the work that we will be gladly speak to and discuss. And no, I am not going to get into allegations and social media comments about any personnel of this district. And, and if you're looking for more comments about what may be out there, if this is, I'm not going to do it and I'm not going to do it here and I'm not going to address it. So if that's clear. Any, any, anyone else wish to weigh in? I'm pretty much, I'm pretty much out of water, so I'm, I'm going to stop talking. And are we good?
I think you, what you stated was clear, Rob, I think we should move forward.
Thank you Chris. So any other discussion items? You know, we've got our work sessions coming up next week and we have February coming up. And we're al- almost already through one month of 2021. It's, it's been busy. So I am very happy, Dr. Brown, great, great evening tonight, a bit different than the last time. So we're, we're happy to get back to work. As I said, Dr. Brown, I have a tie on, it's time to get to work. So, you know, enough of this COVID stuff, let's, let's play some sports, let's get the kids in school and let's, let's make it to spring. So looking forward to it. So without further ado, if no one else said anything, we'll, we'll close it out and head home. Thank you everyone.